That volume on you?
Yep, I hear you.
Yep.
That's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Me, huh? All right, okay. Good evening, everybody. How are you doing tonight, the, uh, the public? Hi, Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. This is...
Uh-oh.
This is Attorney Matthew Petrowheese, our counsel tonight. As soon as, uh, is Dave ready to take us, uh... Is he there, Dave?
Yes, he is. Do you have your script?
I have my script.
Okay, great.
Are we... Are we off the public, uh...
No, you need to start with public and then we'll move into executive session by following that script.
Okay. Yes. Okay, all right. We will go into executive session pursuant to Chapter 3 to discuss litigation relating to petition number 5005, that being 1044 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Board can move to enter executive session if it is determined by the Chair that meeting an open session could leave a detrimental effect on the position of this Board. The Chair so declares that it would have a detrimental effect if the session were conducted in public. Do I have a motion to go into executive session as recited?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna take a roll call. All those in favor of going into executive session will go by roll call. Barbara?
Aye.
Hi, John?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so it's unanimous. So we will go into executive session.
You need to state whether you're...
Yes, yes.
SI, you see the purple?
Yeah.
On the right?
Yeah, I see it.
We lose him?
Maybe not. This isn't that.
Have a good story, Alfred.
Okay.
He's on there.
Oh, yeah. My sister said, "Don," they ran over fingers, "you know, roller skating." Since she never skated, because I was six. Kill myself. I'm not scared. My sister did skate every week. I skate every year.
I thought he made it. I thought he was gonna make it. I know, he's like, right there, right there. Oh, dear.
His mic's on, his camera's on, but we don't see him.
Well, he's just locked out.
No, I...
And then she pushed the whole thing, or...
No, you can't come here with the light.
We're aware we are live on TV.
I know.
They're reading their lips. Finally.
All right, I'm, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna try to start the meeting now, so Sean has joined us. So, go right ahead, Sean.
All right, everybody, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, welcome to the February 8, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Boarding of Appeals. We have five matters on our agenda tonight. The first matter is petition 5072, Jennifer G. Stanley and Patrick J. Demko. Property location is 759 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in a B2 zoning district in the HMOD 1. Applicant seeks a special permit per 404.5.2 and/or a variance for 404.5.3, subsections 8 and 9, to create 100% seasonal employee housing at an existing motel. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you identify yourselves for the records, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and seated with me is Patrick Demko, one of the owners of the property.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
As you indicated, we are seeking a special permit to allow seasonal employees in 100% of their rooms over at the Parker's River Resort at 759 Route 28. This is probably familiar to some of you, because we've been here on two occasions before tonight for the same exact relief for the last two summers. So it's worked out pretty well, that the intention is to do that again this, this coming year. Just to refresh you, your memory about this property, it's in the B2 zoning district, has 1.42 acres, 153 feet of frontage on Route 28, and is currently improved with a 24-room motel, which was built in approximately 1955, with a manager's apartment and an outdoor picnic area. There are no exterior changes contemplated. The relief just pertains to the use of the property only. The applicant seeks to create seasonal employee housing at the property by leasing all the rooms to employees of another company that owns and operates a number of motels here in Yarmouth for their employees. The applicant complies with all but two of the conditions for the issuance of the one-year permit. The 404.5.2 of the bylaw states that if the applicant cannot meet all the provisions, special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required. And in this case, the applicant cannot comply with conditions 8 and 9, which are as follows. Eight says that all employees shall have access to cooking facilities, which will include at a minimum a microwave, sink, cooktop, and refrigerator freezer. And number nine, which is no more than 15% of any hotel or motel rooms at a single parcel, may be used for employee housing. This property does have three guest rooms with full kitchens, but the remaining 21 guest rooms do not. However, as in the last couple of years, the employer will be providing meals for each of employees. I think you have a letter in the, in the file to that effect, and that's worked out very well for the, for the employees. In addition, the leasing of all the rooms runs afoul of that 15% rule. But, and as we've discussed on a number of occasions, and you've heard in a number of different settings than just this one, the current housing crisis for temporary employees or even entry-level workers has not been resolved. The need for that, to house those seasonal employees, earning some of them minimum wage or more, are unable to break into the rental housing market or even purchase housing. I think a special permit, as it has in the past, can be issued as the motel rooms, to use the motel rooms at the site, because it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use as a traditional motel. No undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion created, no substantial harm to the neigh, to the neighborhood. I think that last year, they had a total of six cars. Out of all those employees, the rest were shuttled to and from work by the employer or took their bicycles. So you're talking about a number, a significant drop in number of trips at that location onto Route 28. That is the only way in and out, by the way. There is frontage on the back to, I think it's Parkinocket, but they don't use that at all. There's no access there at all. So that, that and the fact that there's not as much turnover just makes it a little quieter property. It's been ver, very well done. Last year, I think we, we even asked the Yarmouth Police Department to provide us information about, you know, what occurred over there, and they actually had a glowing letter in the file from, from Kevin Lennon about the fact that this worked out very well. And also from Community Development Office, Karen Green was just here. I think she also submitted a, a letter saying how well this has worked without any issues. And it's been good for those hotels down on the, on the water who need a place to put their employees, so... You know, again, we, we, we wish that there was some sort of proposal for dormitory type of housing to, to put employees, you know, a number of employees into one location. We still don't have that. Until, until we do, we have to find a housing where we can, so... That's the proposal. Again, there are no changes compared to the last two years. It's worked out very well, and I anticipate that it's gonna work out very well again this year, so... If you have any questions, Mr. Demko is here, and thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna go to the Board with any questions. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
You, you mentioned the three rooms have like a kitchenette or something in them?
The three rooms are set up, Patrick Demko. The three rooms are set up, they're suites, so they have, they have stoves, cooktops, sinks, and microwaves and refrigerators. But there's only three, and what we agreed upon with the, their employer is they would provide three meals a day, and they are shuttled back and forth. So we also provide, we provide a picnic area, an enclosed picnic area with outdoor grills for them. So it's worked out fine. 99% of the employees end up eating at the hotel. To begin with, most of them are already in the service industry there, in the hospitality end of it, as far as food.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
John, do you have any questions?
How many employees are housed there?
Total of 51.
51 employees?
Mm-hmm.
In how many units?
24 units. There's two units that accommodate three people, and the, the other units, there are two people. That we, it's, it's the maximum we'll allow, and it's, it's in our agreement with them, yeah. And also, like Attorney Tardif said, we only allow so many vehicles on the property. They provide a round-the-clock shuttle, day and night. The shuttle even takes them to the grocery store. It, it makes a big difference of not having that traffic on the 20, onto 28. And they get to work on time. It's a, it's a really well-designed machine, and it's working well. And that's why we're here for another season, hopefully.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jay, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. It's 100% red jacket employees, is that right?
Yes, it is, sir.
Because the letter came from, I just didn't know if anybody else was there.
Yes, well, it's EOS, so it's red jacket, blue, you know, all those, yeah.
So this letter covers everybody that's gonna be there?
Correct.
And then you haven't, as far as I know, you haven't heard, had any, any complaints from anybody? Any police calls?
None whatsoever. In fact, the meeting that Attorney Tardif mentioned, Chief of Police, Fire Chief was here for the meeting. Every, a lot of town members, Chamber of Commerce, everybody. We never got one complaint, we never got one call, emergency call. EOS, as well as ourselves, we have a zero tolerance on behavior. If anybody does something that they don't get a second chance, they don't get a third chance. They are off the property, and it's worked out fine, you know?
Glad this has worked out.
And most of the people are very respectable, they're here, they're, they're here earning a living, you know? And they, they pay their taxes, which is great.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anthony?
Only one question I share with the Board that I don't see many issues. You've come back before, and it's the same program every year that we desperately need, so I appreciate that. And my only question was, do you mind coming back every year for the review?
This, I guess, would be counting as our review. And I had asked last year if we could just have it rolling so that we wouldn't have to come back every year. And I, I think we do have to come back every year, because the bylaw does allow the building commissioner, when you meet all the criteria, to issue a one-year permit. So I think it's just to control it, so is that, is that what you're asking me? Is it, yeah? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't mind coming back, I'd rather not, but...
I proposed the question last season and said maybe we could set some standards and, you know, requirements that if we, if we violate them, then that, like, give us three years or two years instead of, you know? Well, it becomes expensive, you know, time-consuming and expensive. But that was, that was, we were turned down on that. Said it's another subject to be dealt with at another point in time, so, yeah.
Not too expensive.
Okay.
Group rate, okay.
Anything else from the Board?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please step to the microphone. Seeing none. I don't see any correspondence in the file. Dolores, do we have any?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then if there's no other questions from the Board, we'll close the hearing to the public and deliberate amongst the Board. Anybody wish to begin a discussion or make a motion?
Well, I, I'll make a motion, but I just wondered, I don't remember why we couldn't put a two-year type of timeframe on it. Do you remember why, Sean?
Because the bylaw prohibits it.
Oh, okay.
If they wanna add for variance, they could.
Yeah.
But that's the only way. They can't do it by special permit.
Well, we did ask for a variance in this case.
Well, are you proceeding on the variance relief right now with special permit relief?
Special permit.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we cover that one?
So I, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the request of the petitioner for a one-year extension of the 100% occupancy.
Okay. Second to that?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
The only thing that I would just say in terms of the petition is, is the petitioner has presented, and he meets the criteria under the bylaw, and that it's the same as he's been doing for the past couple of years. And as he's testified, everything's running great over there. We certainly need the employee housing, and we wish him well. I would recommend the Board support this motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Attorney Tardif, do we need a decision from you? I think we do, don't we?
Yes, and I'll have that for you soon. The only thing I would ask is if we could withdraw all the rest of the relief that we requested. I think it was a variance, so we don't need it. So we'd like to request a withdrawal without prejudice on that, if I could.
So moved.
Motion made by Jay, second, anyone?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to having a draft decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next petition, it's petition 5074, Francisco and Karen DeFonte, 32 and 40 Old Church Street, Yarmouth Port, Massachusetts. It's in our 40 zoning district. The applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building commissioner and/or a special permit for 104.3.5 subsection 2 and/or amend decision 4001 dated February 17, 2006, and add 3,947 square feet of area to 40 Old Church Street from land at 32 Old Church Street. Attorney Tardif, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Tardif, an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and seated with me is Francisco DeFonte, who's one of the owners of the properties at 32 and 40 Old Church Street in Yarmouth Port. As you indicated, we're seeking to overturn the decision of the building commissioner or in the alternative, secure a special permit or to amend a prior decision, number 4001, to allow for the reconfiguration of parcels, which will render the property at 40 Old Church Street less non-conforming as to area and frontage, and which will maintain the existing applicable bulk requirements for 32 Old Church Street in the R40 zoning district. Just by way of a little background, in February of 2006, the then-owner of the property at 32 and 40 Old Church Street proposed an approval-not-required plan, which created a lot containing 8,540 square feet, consisting of a rectangle measuring 80 feet by 107 feet, to be improved with a single-family dwelling. That plan was endorsed by the Yarmouth Planning Board and recorded in the Registry of Deeds, and that is number 40, just so you'll know. In September of 2023, the petitioners, these petitioners, sought to increase the size of the parcel known as 40 Old Church Street and proposed to move the lot lines established in the A&R plan, which would result in an increase in the area of that parcel from its prior, or from its prior 8,540 square feet up to 12,487 square feet, and also increasing the frontage from 80 feet to 100 feet along Old Church Street. And the proposal was to take land from 32, which was a very large lot, and to just add it to the perimeter of the existing lot to make it a little bit bigger, and in, in the process, make it less non-conforming. However, it was the opinion of both the town planner and the building commissioner, Mr. Grills, that although the A&R plan could in fact go forward to be endorsed, which it has been, by the way, but a special permit pursuant to zoning by law, section 104.3.5, would be needed from this Board to allow that reconfiguration. It, it was, and it is my position, that no special permit is needed from this Board based on the language of zoning by law, section 104.3.5 subsection 4. On December 6 of 2023, as I indicated, the Yarmouth Planning Board did endorse that new A&R plan. And with the application filed on December 23 with the Yarmouth Clerk's Office, a copy of the email exchange between Mr. Grills and myself was submitted. That's dated November 29 of '23. So we did timely appeal that decision within the 30 days provided. And it's that decision that we are appealing. It's our contention that what the petitioner is doing can be done by right without the need for a special permit from this Board. And I know that, you know, we're here now and would likely meet the requirements for a special permit if, if pressed. However, I think the manner in which the zoning bylaws interpret is important for the next case, and the next case, and the next case. I think some clarity from this Board might be in order. As I indicated, under 104.104.3.5.4, that allows a reconfiguration by right, and it states as follows. "Nothing in this section shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area to an otherwise buildable or developed lot, provided that such addition renders the resulting lot less non-conforming and does not create any additional non-conforming building lots and does not otherwise make any other lot more non-conforming." Basically, what it's saying is that if you have a big lot next door that can share a little bit of its land with a smaller lot to make it a little bit closer to the zoning requirements, you can do it. And then what it says here is, "Nothing shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area." We have, well, in this case, the addition renders the resulting lot less non-conforming. Here, we're gonna go from 8540 square feet to 12,487 square feet. Does not create any additional non-conforming building lots. Both 32 and 40 Old Church are improved with single-family dwellings, and we're, we're taking two existing improved lots and ending up with two improved lots. Three, it does not otherwise make any other lot more non-conforming. Look, after we give that 5,000 or so feet to 40, 32 still complies with all of the current zoning requirements and bulk requirements of the bylaw. It actually has about 200 feet of frontage on Old Church, and it is a very large lot. I think it's about 60-something, 64,000 square feet, after it provides that 5,000 square feet to the neighboring lot. The other thing I want you to note on here is, in, in section 4, it says, "Nothing in the, in the section shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area to an otherwise, otherwise buildable or developed lot." That's significant, calling those two things out. One's buildable, one's developed. Buildable, and according to that, means that it is, there is no improvements to it, but it can be improved. A developed lot has developments on it, and that's significant, and I'll tell you in a minute why. As additional proof of your zoning bylaw that allows the petitioner to do what he's trying to do by right, you look at 104.3.5.5. The first sentence of that section states as follows. "When an owner of a developed property wishes to combine the developed lot with one or more abutting non-developed lots, and where the resulting lot will not conform to the current dimensional requirements but will be less non-conforming than the individual lots, such combination may be done by right." So in this case, we have proposed a very small lot, if you will, of about 5,000 square feet that wraps around 40 Old Church. And we're trying to add that to the existing lot. Four and five clearly indicate to me that that is allowed by right. It's the position of the building commissioner in that email that was included in the application that section 4, and I'm gonna quote, is, quote, "more of a guidance paragraph to the ZBA when they are deciding on granting relief." I'm not aware of any provision in the zoning bylaw which provides merely guidance. It's either, it's, it's either allowed or it's not. Second, Mr. Grills believes that using paragraph 4 alone would negate the purpose of paragraph 2 in the bylaw as it relates to the redivision of lots. However, I think that's, I think if you take a look at paragraph 2, it would indicate that the purpose of that section is for the redivision or combination of lots that are unimproved. You see a lot of reference to buildable lots, not improved lots. And you saw in section 4 how they actually made a differentiate, differentiation between buildable and developed lots. And that's why I think that there's a little confusion here. And that's why it's very important for this Board to give us some guidance on that. You are the ultimate arbiters of your bylaw. So I think, I think that what we're trying to do should have been allowed by right. The A&R has already been approved. We are waiting to record that until we get some guidance from this Board. If, if you have any other questions in that regard, I'm more than happy to, to explain my, my, my thought process on that. Now, if, if it's the Board's opinion that a special permit is in fact needed, I don't think there's any question that we meet the requirements. Combination of redivision does not increase the number of non-conforming buildable lots over the number of lots that exist. Combination of redivision will not increase any pre-existing non-conformity. It's not creating any new non-conformity. Development and use of all the resulting and affected lots as proposed would be consistent with the current and future development of the neighborhood. Well, as I indicated, we already have two houses, one on each of these lots. I don't know how it's gonna change anything, except give one, one property a little bit bigger backyard. Not gonna create any nuisance, hazard, or congestion. We're not adding building lots, we're not adding dwelling units. So either way, I think we are entitled to do what we, we want to do. I just think that it is important for this Board to have a discussion regarding the interpretation of section 104.3.5.4 and 5. Because if, if... Because if, if we are not allowed to do this by right, then someone has to tell me what 4 and 5 is doing in this bylaw, because otherwise we might as well just remove it and just come back for special permits. But I can tell you that I've been to the building, billing department on at least two other occasions in the last year where we were adding land to a lot to make it bigger and closer to conforming, and it was allowed by right. No one even blinked, and no one sent us to this board for approval of it. So I think, I'm not sure what happened there, but I think that that is a flawed and erred reading of 104.3.5. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Does everybody understand on the board what's going on here? I'm going to read into the record, and I believe everybody has it in front of them. This is the building commissioner's response to Attorney Tardif, who stated in his email to the building commissioner that sections, well, you referenced 4, Attorney Tardif. I don't believe 5 was in your letter, but I understand what you're reading in 5 as well. Attorney Tardif is relying on 103, 104.3.5 subsection 4, claiming that the language in that section allows his client as a matter of right to add land to this lot, number, it's 40 that you're adding to, correct, Attorney Tardif?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And by doing so, it's not going to create any more nonconformity or any nonconformity to number 32, which they have plenty of land.
Correct.
The building department's interpretation is that 103.5.2 should be the controlling part of the bylaw. And we're going to go over that right now. It says, "When the owner or owners of abutting lots," which in this case we do, "whether or not any of such lots are currently developed, wish to combine or re-divide such lots, but where one or more of the existing lots do not conform to the current dimensional requirements, which we have here, and where one or more of the resulting lots will not conform to the current dimensional requirements, which we have here, because 40 will not comply, such combinations or redivisions may be allowed by special permit from the Board of Appeals upon the following conditions." It says, "See also section 103.5, paragraph 5, or other applicable provisions." We'll go there in a minute. A, the combination or redivision does not increase the number of nonconforming individually buildable lots over the number of such lots as presently exist." That is correct in this case. B, the combination or redivision shall not increase any pre-existing nonconforming nor create any new nonconformity as to any existing structure or use of the lots involved or affected by the combination or redivision. That's correct in this. It will not. C, if more than one adjoining vacant nonconforming lot is created by or is the result of the combination or redivision, it, they may be approved for construction of a single-family residence thereon provided that each lot is substantially less nonconforming than the pre-existing lot for which it was created. Number 2, has at least 75% of the area frontage, area and frontage required for the new lot in the zoning district. I believe that's correct. And 3, is consistent with or larger than the other residential lots in the neighborhood. And we have D, the development and use of all of the resulting and effective lots as proposed would be consistent with the current and future development of the neighborhood and zoning district, would not cause or substantially contribute to any undue nuisance hazard or congestion in the neighborhood or zoning district, would substantially promote the intended purpose of the bylaw currently in effect, and the entire combination or re-subdivision proposal is consistent with the intent and purpose of this subdivision. We can have a discussion whether that is true or not. In my judgment, I think the petitioner does meet the criteria for a special permit under section 2 as the building department thinks that he should come to us for a special permit. Attorney Tardif is suggesting that 4 and 5 are more applicable, and he should be doing it as, be allowed to do it as a matter of right. He did read the perimeter plans relative to combining one or more abutting developable lots, resulting lot would not conform to the current dimensional requirements but with less, will be less nonconforming than the individual lots, such combination may be done by right. So I think what we have here, we don't see it often, but we do see it. I think an argument can be made that both parties are correct here. But I think one thing that we need to do is, I think maybe we need to go back to the, or send a memo over to the planning board and ask them to clean this language up a little bit so there's no inconsistency or confusion. So with that, I will go to questions from the board. Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I, I do. Just in terms of how you would see the play between sections 4 and 5 and sections 2, can you think of considerations or hypotheticals that would be applicable to section 2 and meet the special permit requirements but wouldn't be under section 5, the as-of-right? That it would require the special permit but wouldn't be as-of-right, excluding your own circumstance right now?
I, if, I guess I could come up with something, but I guess it's always been the position of the building department in this town since I've been here, that whenever you get to add land to a nonconforming lot to make it better, you can do it. There is no penalty for doing that. And I'm not saying coming before you is a penalty, but I'm just saying that should be something that is an easy task to handle so that as long as you are not making something else worse, you're merely going to end up with something getting better, that you do it by right. And that's what section 4 is, and that's always been the policy up until, I guess, this filing. I truly believe, though, that under section 2, those, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that that was intended for undeveloped lots. Because if you look at 2A, "The combination or redivision does not increase the number of nonconforming individually buildable lots." There it is again, "buildable," which is sort of defined when you look at section 4, which talks about buildable or developed lots. So there is a different word for each. Under C, "If more than one adjoining vacant nonconforming lot is created," well, we're not doing, we're not creating anything vacant in this case. There already are two structures on these lots. We're just adding a little bit of extra space to one to make it better, leaving the one that gave it just as good as it was before. Still was 61,000 square feet. So I don't see how, I just don't, I think it's the application of, of this one in this case that has me curious because I think section 4 has always been the policy of the building department in my 25 years, is that if you can make it better, you know, because we're not growing land, but if you can give it, you can do it. Probably doesn't answer your question, but, you know.
Anything else, any?
No.
Okay. Jay?
4 seems to fit the bill, but I do have a couple of questions. The one thing I don't see is, the idea is to make it not, less nonconforming. There's no setbacks on the plan, and I wish there were. At least I don't see any.
Well, we're not moving the house that's there.
Understood, but the new property, the new property line or the new, what will be the new property line between the two houses, doesn't show the setbacks. I'm assuming they're larger than required, but it's an assumption because there's no, there's no numbers.
Would the 2018 plan be?
Which one is that? Oh, did I not get that? I'm looking at this one. Well, I've got the big plan.
One of the decisions.
Okay. And there are existing houses. Where the heck are these things? This is 32. Where's the other one? So 32 is now 22, so 32 is a nonconforming because it's closer to the road already?
No, 32 is pre-existing nonconforming. It's
That's what I mean, pre-existing nonconforming.
Yeah, probably that. And well, it's, it's actually, when it comes to bulk requirements, other than the front setback, yeah, it meets them all.
So they're both, for whatever reason, pre-existing nonconforming to begin with. I mean, I don't see a problem just using number 4 personally, but I'll be anxious to hear what everybody else has to say. I'm all set, Sean. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John?
I don't have any questions for you. I mean, it's certainly confusing, you know. It would seem to me that 4 does apply. You have the right to, you know, to extend the lot. I'd like to hear what the board has to say. Thank you, Sean.
Okay. Barbara? Okay. I have a question for the petitioner. Would you be at all prejudiced if you were to be granted a special permit under section 2?
Would we be prejudiced? No.
No.
No, but I, I think it's important for you to set the definition here so that for future cases, for future applications, we will know how to read this bylaw because if, and I agree with you, it probably needs to be cleaned up by the planning board, but for purposes of, of what 4 says, I, I don't understand how 4 could ever be applied if you're reading 2 like Mr. Grills did. Because how, how could you ever add land without having to come for a special permit? Standard.
I, I, I think you make a very valid point. The only question that I have is, why do we have section 2? I know there are other qualifications to section 2, of which you meet all of them, specifically on C. But why do we, what differentiates 2 from 4 other than language that is a little bit more in-depth? But I think it says the same thing, doesn't it?
Well, no. One says by right, one says special permit. But I think
I see by number 5. I don't see by right in number 4.
Well, when it says, "Nothing in this section shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area to an otherwise buildable developed lot" without any reference to needing, you know, once you get a special permit or as a criteria for special permit, that's not what that says.
No, I agree. I agree.
And I think 5 just supports that language in 4 with that first sentence.
Nothing in this section shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area to an otherwise buildable or developed lot, which you have, provided that such disredundancy, yeah? I think it would be a lot cleaner as it is in number 5. And why they didn't put that language in 4, if that was the intent of the planning board, maybe it was an oversight. I mean, it's clear in number 5, under perimeter plans, which you, you're not, are you doing that here also? Would you fall into that?
No, this is not a perimeter plan. It's an A&R, but I think the principle's the same, which is basically we're creating a, we're creating a lot to be added to number 40, which is about 20 feet wide and runs along the side and the back of this property. So did we create a lot and then immediately add it to an improved lot? Yes. Is that what a perimeter plan is? It's pretty much is close to that. I mean, it's when you're putting two lots together. Well, we did it in this case. We created a small, narrow lot that we added to number 40, making it less nonconforming with regard to both frontage and size of the lot. It's not a perimeter plan, but its principle is the same.
Let me just look at something here. I'm, I'm kind of keying in on C under 2C, section 2C. If one, if more than one adjoining vacant nonconforming lot is created, but you're not doing that there.
Right.
Right?
We're not creating any vacant lots.
So really, the only thing in section 2 that is applicable to you is 2A and B, isn't it?
No, not even A.
The combination or re, does not increase the number of nonconforming individually buildable lots?
That's right. This is not a buildable lot.
Right.
It's already improved. So I don't think A applies. I don't think C applies. B
Really, it's 2B.
Yeah, which is pretty much what subsection 4 says.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I mean, it, presuming 4 wasn't even in the bylaw. If you, I don't think there'd be really any discussion, right? We'd just, we grant the special permit, you, you meet the criteria.
Correct. But I also think 4 was in there for a reason, because I think you would have a pile of cases coming here. And I think that was probably the intention, is that there are certain circumstances when you add land to, to lots, that you just don't want to see them. It's, it's
But
I hate to say easy cases, but they are.
Let, let's say you just had 2B standing alone. Okay, just 2, subsection B. Doesn't that say the same thing as 4?
2B? It does.
2, section 2, reading 2, and then we're going to subsection B. If you take those 2, that says exactly what 4 says, right?
Except one requires a special permit and one does not.
Does 5 really apply? I mean, it says
No, not, not really.
Well, it doesn't apply because I don't have a perimeter plan under 81X.
Well, also, it says combine developed lot with one or more non-developed lots. So
Yeah, but that's, they're not pursuing it under 81X on a perimeter plan.
Yeah.
So, so basically what we have here is we've got two sections of the bylaw. Section 2 says you need a special permit. Attorney Tardif suggests that under number 4, there should not be a requirement for a special permit because he's relying on the language that says, "Nothing in this section." And, and you're, you're suggesting that it's section, the whole section, 103.5 section, correct?
104.3.5, yes.
Okay, so nothing, so you're, you're taking the whole of the section of the bylaw using that language standard for vintage. Okay.
I don't know, Sean, I kind of look at this right now. The 4 just says you can't override just giving land from one to another, but, but you still need a special permit.
Who does that?
Go back to 2.
According to Tardif, four does not. I, I think.
I agree with that.
I, I see arguments, well, first of all, I see the language in the bylaw, so it, it seems that you have duplicitous, what's that word? Duplicitous?
Duplicitous.
Duplicitous, thank you. Language, although the only one that said, one says special permit, the other one is silent, but you're relying on this. So, okay. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please step forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this position? Seeing none. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one, just one more point, too.
Go ahead.
In order to do this, we, we had to go to the planning board with an A and R plan, an approval not required plan for endorsement. They took a look at it, they've approved it. So there is a mechanism in place that we, we can't just do this willy-nilly. We, we do it in accordance with the planning board rules for an A and R plan. So someone's looking at this. It's not as if this is just, you know, off the cuff, we can add whatever we want, wherever we want. No.
I understand.
But, and, and in this case, when you have developed lots, I, I just don't understand the need for a special permit in this case. I don't, I don't think the bylaw requires it, so.
Okay, all right. All right, so we're going to close the, we're going to close the hearing to the public. We're going to begin board deliberations. I think we can pretty much, we can sit, we will go with reversing the decision of the building commissioner at first. But are we all in agreement that otherwise he still meets the requirements under 104.3.5?
Yes.
Point two?
Yes.
So I think that's clear. He's, he's met all those requirements. So let's talk about how, what the interpretation of the board is. Who'd like to begin a discussion?
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
I, I don't think it's appropriate in this particular instance for us to create a long-form standing determination as to all applications that come before us or that could come before us under this rule, unfortunately, Attorney Tardif. I don't, I don't think we're permitted to do so. I think we have to take it on a case-by-case basis. But in doing so, in this specific case, I think a reversal of the building commissioner's determination is appropriate. The way I read section four is when it says nothing shall be intended to prevent the addition of land, it refers to, or the intent is to refer to the, what is really the exceptions that are permissible for a special permit. Because otherwise it is not, you're not able to combine the lands in certain circumstances unless you meet the conditions of section 104.3.2, 103.104.3.5, section two, and the criteria there. The special permit requirements are the exceptions to a non-permissible. And if we have within the same bylaw, language that says nothing in this section shall be intended to prevent, I, I think it removes it from the special permit allocations that we have to, they would have to meet, and they do meet, but I, I think it removes that section. Should it be cleaned up by the planning board? Absolutely. But in this particular instance, if I am reading the bylaw specifically, this is an, an addition of land to an otherwise buildable or developed lot, we should, we should not have the authority to prevent that addition based on the way I would read this specifically for this case.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Jay?
Not sure if I say the same thing or not, but I, the way I read it right now is he qualifies for a special permit for sure. And I think, I feel all that number four is saying is that nothing should be interpreted from this whole section that says you can't just add land from one lot to another. That's what I'm reading from number four, from, from a developed to a developed. But number five, which says by right, seems to be combining properties that, one it's developed and others that aren't. So I see that as a difference. So I would basically say it just needs a special permit, but it should be authorized.
Okay. John?
I think it certainly needs to be cleaned up by the planning board. But and he's, and he's eligible for a special permit. As far as clearing up the discrepancy, I don't really have an opinion on that.
Okay. Well, the question on the table is are you going to reverse the decision of the building commissioner or not? The building commissioner says you need a special permit under 103, 104.3.5 subsection two. Counsel for the petitioner and petitioner claim that doesn't apply because if you go to section four, it says nothing in this section shall be intended to prevent the addition of land area to an otherwise buildable or developed lot. And then it's got the conditions that you must meet, which it appears that the petitioner has. So that's the question on the table tonight. Do you agree with the building commissioner that he needs a special permit? Do you agree with petitioner who says, we do not? Section four says we do not, we can do it as a matter of right.
I don't see that in section four.
Well, it, it would be a lot, it would be a lot cleaner if it said the words as a matter of right, you know?
Yeah, I think if it said as a matter of right, we would have no issue with it.
Of course, as, as the attorneys on the board and for the petitioner sometimes realize, that sometimes lawyers who write things put so much language in, it becomes very confusing. Plain language can be so valuable at times, can't it?
I was previously on the planning board, so I don't know if I wrote this. So I can't take, I don't want to take credit for it.
Yeah, we, we won't put your fingerprints on this one, Anthony. So John, what do you think? That, that's, that's the question.
Right. So I'd be inclined to agree with the building commissioner here and grant a, a special permit.
Okay. Barbara?
I agree with Anthony's analysis of this, so there is a contradiction between these two sections. So I'd be willing to just grant a special permit.
Okay, so you're in favor of the building commissioner's position?
Yeah.
Okay. So just polling the board, I have Barbara, John, Jay, where are you? Are you with the building commissioner? Are you with the building commissioner or the petitioner?
I am, a special permit, yes.
So there's three on the special permit. Anthony, I think you're siding with the building commissioner.
No, I'm citing that the, a special permit is unnecessary.
Yeah, that's the, oh, excuse me. You're, you're siding with the petitioner. I stand corrected.
I think I stand alone.
Well.
Stand with you.
Well, I tell you what, I could give you my opinion, however, right now it, it appears that there aren't sufficient votes to overturn the building inspector. So I, I, this is what I think. I think we need to send a memo, at the very least, to the planning board and ask that this section of the bylaw be clarified. Because I think it's very, very important. Because I do think it is the purpose and intent of the bylaw that people be allowed to add land where it's not going to create less of a non-conformity, or where it's going to create less of a non-conformity. We always want to make things more conforming. That's what, under the purpose and intent of the bylaw is, to bring things into conformity. And as we all know, the town of Yarmouth, nothing conforms because they change the zoning in every district. So even where you have a big lot, say 25,000 square feet, it's probably in an R40 district. Same thing with the small lots on the south side. Now they're all R25s. But I, I do think we need some clarification on that because if it is the purpose and intent, and a strong argument has been made, then I think language should be inserted in there, clarifying what it means and saying that it can be done as a matter of right. So future petitioners don't have to appear before this board, nor get into spirited debates with the building commissioner's office. Having said that, if we're not going to overturn the decision of the building permit, is there a motion to approve this special, by special permit? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a special permit based on what was presented for the, the adding of the land from one property to the other.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Anthony seconds that. Any further discussion on the motion before we take a vote? All that I would add is it's clear that the petitioner meets the criteria under sections 104.3.5 subsection two. That he should be granted a special permit to add land to his non-conforming lot. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. We need to take a vote on, so the special permit is approved. There is, actually, we need to take a vote on the overturning the decision of the building inspector, too.
Make a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Is that what, no, just?
I'd like a vote, please.
A vote?
Yeah, I'd like a vote.
Okay. I need a motion to either uphold the decision of the building commissioner or a motion to overturn the decision of the building commissioner.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to uphold the opinion of the building.
Decision of inspector?
Yes.
No, second.
Okay. John seconds that? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
It carries the, it carries three to two. The decision, it, three to, three to two. Attorney Tardif?
Yes?
Simple majority, correct, to? I think we only need a simple majority on that one.
Not sure about that.
I'm not either. The granting of relief by way of special permit of variance requires at least four. I'm not quite sure on the decision to uphold or overturn the decision of the building commissioner. I believe that's a simple majority. But that's the vote. Three in favor, two. Let's go over that again. Three in favor to uphold the decision of the building inspector?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Then, hold on, I was confused. That will be a, I am changing my vote to aye. So it's four to one to uphold the decision of the building commissioner with the caveat that I'm asking that we send a memo over to the planning board right away and ask for clarification and work on this section of the bylaw because I think the petitioner raised a very valid point. The reason that I am not supporting that is because there is other language in the bylaw under the section 104.3.5 subsection two that clearly addresses that as well, but references the requirement of a special permit. And I'm not comfortable with why there was conflicting language, why there'd be, and I understand petitioner's position, but stand alone, number four, the number, that, that section of the bylaw would just be where they fall into, requires a special permit. The other one is argued should be a matter of right, but is silent on that, so I'm not prepared to go that far. Attorney Tardif, we expect a draft decision on the special permit.
You will have it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Nice night. Okay, one second here, gang. I just misplaced my agenda. It'll be around here somewhere, had it all night. Okay, the next petition is petition 50082, Peter V. Kimball, trustees of the commercial Yarmouth nominee trust. Property location at 2432 Commercial Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in a B1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for 104.4.1 to establish a commercial condominium within the existing two-building commercial property. Good evening.
Good evening, Peter Kimball, representing 32 Commercial.
Okay. All right, we have your, so you're requesting to, tell us about your petition here.
Yeah, basically, we would like to take the two buildings as two independent condominium units for the partition. Yep.
Are they on the same lot?
24 and 32 are considered a contiguous lot that's not subdivisible.
Are your, okay. Are your plans to combine the lots?
The lots are combined, as far as I know from the town records.
They could be combined for purposes of zoning. Are they actually combined into common ownership?
Yes.
Who holds the title to? 24?
32 Commercial Yarmouth Nominee Trust.
And who, and who holds the title to 32?
Same.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Looks like it is shown on the, the map also, the, what is it, the zoning or tax map is a single lot.
Yeah, it's taxed as a single lot.
It's taxed as a single lot. Okay, okay. All right, and I'm seeing from the map here exclusive use unit one in that back left corner. So all the people in unit one, you use that area?
Yes.
Okay. What would they be using that area for?
It's, it's parking and just common ground area.
When you say parking, I don't see any spaces back there.
Oh, sorry, exclusive use for unit, the property behind the building 24? Yeah.
The 24 there and to the left of 32. I'm just curious what that's going to be.
Right, so we have a prospective tenant that wants to create or use 32's first floor as a daycare center. And we're reserving that area behind 24. center, and we're reserving that area behind 24 for a playground, if they in fact do that.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. And how many units do you have in building one?
Uh, rental units or condo units?
Condo, well.
Building one is gonna be one single condo unit.
One single condo unit?
Yep.
When you say rentals, uh, are these all, uh, unit one is all owned by the trust right now?
Correct.
Is it your plan to sell any individual units inside that?
No.
Okay. So really, and, and is it the same hold true with the other building as well?
Correct.
So what we really have is we're just condominiumizing two buildings that will remain within the trust?
Uh, actually, we're, the reason we're condominiumizing it is to sell 24.
Is to sell 24?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise, we would not be able to sell 24 as a parcel.
Right. I, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, and Jay Frazier, the, that platinum across the street is the proposed buyer, so.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. They do a nice job. Okay, and I was looking through your condo docs, the declaration of, and it's under the management entity. You, the, the trust is gonna be the, the management authority under Section 12 of your declaration, or actually it's?
Yeah, that condominium trust would be a, probably a separate entity from the, um, property trust, so.
Well, do you have any language in these documents that talks about the management authority? Who's gonna be in charge if something goes wrong? If you burst any pipes, or the fire department has to show up?
Yeah, that, that would, and that would be me as trustee for that, yes.
And is that what you're intending under? Get here, I've got, I've got paragraph 12, but I'm not sure if it's in the master deed or if it's in, let me just look here. I guess it would be. So it's, it's in your master deed, and I'm looking at Section 12. Just had it in front of me. Here we go. Says managing entity. Under this, is this where you have the language that talks about the management authority?
Uh, give me one second to catch up with you. Yeah, I, it, it's, um, right under the first paragraph.
Where it says the entity through which the unit owners will manage and regulate the condominium established hereby?
Yep, I would be the trustee.
Okay, established hereby 2432 Commercial Street Condominium Trust. Can you add any language to this? Is this a problem? Do you have this on a Word document that if we wanted you to amend something, you could?
Uh, not live.
You don't have to do it right now.
Okay.
Is that possible for you to do?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. We can, we can have the lawyer that drafted the trust documents do it.
The only thing is, is we just want some language in there that, that they will be responsible for the day-to-day management of the condominium.
Okay.
Throw something like that in there, okay? So if somebody in the town or somebody has to find out who the management authority is, they could just go, okay, well, there's 24 to, we'll get the trustee of 24 to 32 Commercial Street Condominium Trust.
Yep.
So just throw some language in there. That's all the questions I have right now. Barbara, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, I don't.
John?
No, I don't have any right now. Thank you.
Jay?
I just one. I think it fits what's, what's required in the bylaw, but it does talk about use classification, and from what I just heard, we're probably gonna, I would assume you'd come back for a use request.
Yeah, at the moment, there's no change in use.
Correct. Any changes in use would require?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're.
Well, the, the use is commercial, correct?
It's, yeah, it's, it's currently office space or general business, I think.
Oh, eight right now, but I would assume you need to come back for, for daycare.
Well, if you, something like that, yeah, it depends what the commercial use is.
Right.
But if, if the, if the use of the property, and it needs to be commercial, and I presume your documents describe that somewhere.
Yep.
Okay. It should anyway. I mean, the name of the place is commercial, well, it's Commercial Street, but, um, but the use will be that of a commercial nature and not residential?
Correct.
Anything else, Jay?
That's it, that's all I had.
Anthony?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you? Okay, all right, guys, let me just take a, just sit here. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. If there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time, Mr. Kimball?
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay, all right. All right, we're gonna close it to the public and begin a deliberation of the board. Anybody wish to begin a discussion or make a motion? There's no discussion. Is there anybody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to approve a special permit for petition 5082. Is that right?
Yep, okay.
Did you have a condition, Sean, regarding, uh?
Uh, the, the only, I just want is that the petitioner adds language to the, the management authority that ensures the maintenance from repair, and public health and public and safety aspects, water lines, sewer, that, who, who would be in charge of that? And if he could just do so, we could, we can certainly approve it tonight with the, just the condition that he had that language there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any other? I saw I have a, a motion made by John. Did I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Anthony seconds it. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The only thing I would add is he does meet the criteria under 104.4.1. He's identified the use that is, uh, commercial in his declaration of condominium documents. He's got, he's gonna have proper management authority written in there. And that certainly fits right into that area. It's in a commercial district. So he seems to meet the criteria. Okay, hearing none, uh, no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay, that passes unanimously. I've got just special permit relief here. Okay, sir, um, there's, as you may or may not know, there is a 20-day appeal period after the, is filed with the clerk's office. It's a technical waiting period, if anybody objects to it. Were you planning on drafting a decision, or would you like us to draft a decision?
Uh, I can have the lawyer draft.
Okay, well, why don't you just have him draft a decision? You can add that, uh, that stuff in there. And after you get your special permit, uh, it needs to be recorded at the registry of deeds, and a copy of that needs to come back for our records.
Yep, I'm well aware of the process. Thank you.
All righty, well, thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, brings us to number four here. All right. Next petition is petition 5083, Jennifer Estvez Martinez, property located at 28 Mirror Brook Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R40 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for 202.5, use section P7A, uh, use to allow a family daycare for up to six children. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Estvez.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. We have your petition here. So you wanna do a daycare for up to six children? And I see your license right here. Okay, the issued, so it looks like it was issued back in 2023. So have you been doing a daycare there now?
No.
Where were you doing a daycare when you got this license? Because this license was issued in, a year ago.
Yes, but I, I wasn't.
Free for that, that address. You can tell us if you were, we won't, uh?
No, I wasn't working.
Okay.
I was working, at that time, I was working at Citizens Bank, but I recently had a child, so I had to.
Okay, so, so you got your, then you got all your four together, okay, all right. Now, do you currently have clients that you're gonna come in?
I'm sorry?
Your, your, your daycare children? How old are they, or will they be?
Um, I can have, um, as they say, I can have three, um, from like, um, two months to one year, and then the other can be, uh, one to five years. I can have six child.
So the state allows you to have a two-month-year-old to care for?
Um, yeah, it's two to, um, one year.
Wow, okay. Okay, all right. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna let the rest of the board ask some questions here. Barbara, do you have any questions to the petitioner?
Um, how old is your child?
Just nine months, nine months.
Nine months, okay. And this condition on your license, that your yard is not approved for outdoor play, so, but from your photos, it looks like you're setting up the yard for outdoor play?
Yeah, it wasn't approved, but, um, I was talking to my, the one that gave me the license, just from the state. She was at my house on Monday, because I told her that I have to came here today, and it is approved, so I need to, she needed to send me the, the new.
An updated license?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. John?
So you have a nine-month-old, and, so you, are you asking for five additional children?
Yeah.
Or six?
Five. I can have five.
It'll be six, including your child?
Yeah.
And what hours do you plan to operate this?
Seven to five.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Jay?
Monday through Friday, except I don't have any other questions.
Monday through Friday, okay. Anthony?
Uh, nope, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, uh, you got your yard there, let, let me take a look at some of your pictures here, I've looked at them before. So you're just beginning, do you have any current clients right now?
I am waiting for, for, to be approved from the town. I have one, one client, yeah. Just waiting for me.
So who else lives in the house besides you and your child?
It's me, my brother, and my mom.
Okay, okay, so your brother and your mother?
Mm-hmm.
How old is your brother?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Twenty-three. Has he ever been in trouble with the law?
No. They did a background check, and my mom, uh, my brother and I, and he was.
I, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna ask you about your mother, because mothers never get in trouble, okay, so. Your brother's a good guy, but I thought I should ask. Okay, all right, all right. All right, so you're gonna operate seven to five, Monday through Friday. You have a nine-month-old, so you have an additional five children. You're not quite sure their age is right now, because you don't have anybody. Is your mother gonna help you out, too?
She is, um, um, how do you say that? She have a licensure, but it's not, um, just as assistant certified, just assistant. Yeah, she have her licensure.
She might out also?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, I, I had nothing else, um... Hold on here, I think I have a few things that I gotta read into the record. Get my computer screen to come back on. Hmm, I don't know what happened to it. Well...
Sean, you want me to read the notes?
E, do you have the letters that were sent in?
I do.
Why don't you do that? I'm trying to bring them up on a computer, and I'm not getting them, so if you just, unless they are, well, let me ask you, before you read those into the record, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this?
The state came back and they approved it.
Seeing none. Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, we don't see anybody in the audience, okay? Jay, I think we might have one or two letters in opposition?
We do. Um, I'll read them. It's, uh, the first one is from February 5th. Dear members, this letter is in response to petition 5083. I have lived in this neighborhood since June 1967. It's been a great area to live in, and we take care of one another. Running a daycare business takes a lot of work. You need space to entertain the children, a place for food and snacks, and some, some kids may require a nap occasionally. So I have one question for you. Where? With numerous people living in the house, I can't imagine where the kids are going to be housed, in the fenced-in backyard or locked in the bathroom. Definitely needs an investigatory visit before I give it a thumbs up. I'd check out the septic system, too. I don't think the Buchanan's upgraded the system to house a motel full of people. I'm not against people trying to make the ends meet, but I think this is a dangerous situation that needs further investigation. These people have not tried to fit into our neighborhood. Rules and laws don't apply to them. They are the party house. I'm not take, I'm not talking about four to five hours, more like... I'm not take, I'm not talking about four to five hours, more like all weekend and sometimes during the week. If it's a holiday, no respect for the neighbors. I hope I have given you something to think about and will hopefully check out. Sincerely, Marsha Crowell, 27 Deep Brook Road. The second one is from February 3rd. To Town, Town Zoning Board of Appeals. To whom it may concern, I am a butler at 28 Mirror Brook Road, West Jarmouth. You can look me up in the town records. This one is not signed. But I would prefer to remain anonymous in this situation. I understand this hearing is to approve an in-home daycare at 28 Mirror Brook Road. While I do not have any problem with an in-home daycare, I do take issue with events that have gone on in this property. At least four times during the past, last year, I have had to call the police for noise complaints, always after midnight. Occasionally, there are parties at the house and the residents put a large speaker outside on their back deck and play loud music into the early morning hours. If the in-home daycare is approved, I would request the zoning board of appeals request and receives assurances from the property owner that this will cease. I am not opposed to parties or noise, but very loud music after midnight is excessive and disrespectful to the entire neighborhood. There are direct neighbors and the ones 20 feet from the loudspeaker are an elderly retired couple and I am, and I know they do not appreciate this disruption. The town needs more daycare options, but not if residents of the property disregard common courtesy for their neighbors. Respectfully, a concerned neighbor. Those are the two.
Okay, thank you. What, what's the story with these parties that you're having over there? Who's having all the parties?
I'm sorry?
Who's having all the parties?
That wasn't like a year ago. Used to like play music.
Ever have the police come to the house?
Remember once.
Once? Okay, only once?
Yeah, that I remember, yeah.
That you remember? How long have you lived there?
Three years.
Do you own that house or do you rent the house?
Own.
You own the house?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, okay, yeah, I got a copy of deed right here. Alright. Well. Who's having the parties, though? Is that your brother having the parties and you? It is? You still having a part, you still having parties now that you're a new mother?
We have a nine-month, nine-month-old, so she needs to be.
Okay, okay. Well. Well, we can't have, you know, we can't have parties over there and daycare at the same time, right?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay. Well, I think anything that we do here tonight, we should probably put a condition in with a one-year review.
Agreed.
Is there anything else you wish to add at this time, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Did you, did you want to say anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, alright, thanks. Any other discussion from the board?
A quick question. Does your brother, is your brother living at home during the day? Is he at home during the day?
Well, he work, uh, the port, that's a restaurant in Harwich. He work 10 to midnight, like 12, to live close.
He's out of the house while you'd be tending the children?
He can be at home, like in the area, play the, play area.
Okay, thank you.
So he, so he's there too, huh?
I think he's working during the day.
He cannot be, he cannot, when I'm working, like 7 to 5, he cannot be at home.
He's not?
No.
Okay, okay. Alright, well, if we approve this tonight, we're gonna have a one-year review on you. And if we find that the police are over at your house, we may vote to revoke your special permit. You understand that?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, alright. And I don't think it's a great idea, I don't know what, your, your brother, if he's around or not, but it's not a great idea to have people around. Your mother's one thing, but I don't know about your brother hanging around with all these little kids. So I hope that doesn't become a problem either. We all on the same page with that, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, is anybody prepared to start a discussion or make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for petition 5083.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Alright.
Do we want a condition of one-year review?
With a condition of one-year review, yes.
Okay. Could we also condition that on the hours being seven to five, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And no more than five children?
Additional two.
Because she's got a nine-month-old right now.
Yeah.
So we'll limit her to five children.
Five additional, yes.
Five additional, yeah. And we will have a, a one-year review on this? Is that acceptable as well, Anthony, to your motion?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Is anybody prepared to make a, second the motion?
I did. Jay?
You did? Okay, Jay, Jay, second it. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, ma'am, that, that has been approved. Once the decision is clocked with the town clerk, and that may take a few days, 20 days must elapse. After that, you can come in and pick up your special permit. You must take that special permit over to the Balsill County Registry of Deeds and record it and bring a copy of that back to us for our records, okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and good luck. You too. You guys, I, hold on one second.
Your turn. Thank you for patience.
No, no problem, no problem at all. Thanks for hearing our case.
Give me one second here, folks. Or... And once again. Give me one minute, gang. Forty? Don't even tell you guys this one. Okay. Alright. And the next petition is petition 5084. Congro Remodeling. Property location at 30 Stiles Road, South Jarmouth, Mass. It's in an R40 zoning district. And the applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 subsection 2 and/or variance from section 203.5 for front and side setback relief to construct a 15-by-18 addition. Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. My name is Paul Chubiniak.
Do you identify yourself? Okay.
My name is Paul Chubiniak. I am a architectural designer doing some work for Basil Congro, a local contractor. And I am here to represent the Litchfields, Mr. and Mrs. Litchfield, and proposing this variance or some relief for side and front yard setbacks.
Okay. Alright. So we have your plan here. You're at the corner of Elmira and Stiles. The proposed addition. You're into the front setback. Let's see. You're into front setback seven feet and you're into that side setback seven feet. Okay. Well, let me take a look here. Well, alright. What is it that you're gonna be building in there?
Okay, well, we would like to propose putting a addition on the end of this building, because the Litchfields would like to move to this property full-time. And unfortunately, Mrs. Litchfield does have some disabilities due to an accident. She has some permanent disabilities. And she requires the use of a cane and sometimes a walker to get around. And in order to occupy this house as a full-time, we would need to renovate the master suite bathrooms, which is currently built to, you know, some pretty old standards. For instance, the doorway into the bathroom is only two feet wide. The shower is less than three feet square. And, you know, she can't get a walker in there. We can't get a bath seat into the shower. And we need to expand this bathroom so that they could use their house. In order to do that, we're going to have to come out into the primary bedroom area and it's going to make that bedroom so small that they will not be able to, you furnish it properly. Hence, the reason why we would like to put an addition onto this building.
Do you have a set of plans that you are proposing in? That you have a floor plan?
I do have a, a plan area of the master bedroom suite, which shows the existing bathroom. If I may, I could come and pass them out to the board members?
Okay, go right ahead.
You'll need one stamp, right? Portion of the building at the end, which shows the master bathroom and bedroom suite.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna stamp one, so it's brought, it's actually.
Sure.
So is this currently a two-bedroom house?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
What does BH stand for on the plan?
On the plot plan? I'm not sure what.
Yeah.
Plot plan, I'm not sure what BH stands for.
Oh, I think that's the bathrooms.
Bathroom?
What language is that?
I don't know. It shows two.
Take a look at your plot plan. Unfortunately, I don't have a copy.
It shows two BHs.
Get him a, somebody give him a copy of his own plot plan.
Oh, that must stand for bathroom.
Bathrooms, yeah.
Yeah, there's one, the one adjacent to bedroom number one is, is a bathroom dedicated to that bedroom. And the second BH is a shared bathroom for the whole house.
Okay.
And those are both full bathrooms?
That's correct.
How are you going to access the new addition? Through bedroom one or two?
Through bedroom one, through the primary bedroom as it exists. So we're going, the plan is to expand the bathroom into what is now the bedroom area and then use the remaining space for dressing area, closet, and then use the additional area to, you know, to, for the furnished bedroom, for the bed and the dresser, et cetera.
So what you handed out just shows the existing situation, right?
That's correct.
Not what you're going to get to?
That's right.
Okay.
We have not, we have not discussed how the new plan will lay out, just the footprint that, that we're requesting.
Why couldn't you put all this on the back of the house?
The back of the house, as you could see on the plot plan, has a, has a three-season room attached to it. And I think there is also a septic system that would, uses up the rest of the space we cannot build upon. So this area is the only portion of the plan, of the plot, that we could, that we could possibly fit some more building onto. Now, we have the unfortunate situation in that it is a corner lot. So we have two front yard setbacks that we have to deal with. And then, of course, there is the, the rear setback, which is also, we're asking some relief from.
Okay. Where's, do you have a bulkhead in this house?
No.
No.
Currently, there is no bulkhead, no.
Is there a basement or crawl space?
Yes, there is a full basement.
How do you access the basement? Is there outside access to the basement?
There currently is no outside access. There's a stairway from the center of the house that goes down into the basement.
Well. I, I'm looking at this plan here. And if you look at number four, the north elevation, all the way over to the right excluding your proposed addition, it looks to me like you could put this addition coming right off that back corner right there into the, into your backyard. Your septic system right now, it appears it's over behind the garage. Garage slash family room.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Hi. With regard to where the septic system is located, yes, it is behind the main portion of the house, but there are two septic exhaust pipes that come from the house into the septic system. One is behind the family room on the main portion of the house. And the other one, though, is behind the bedroom that we're renovating. It's basically from that, that bathroom that we're renovating, going out back. So there's septic piping exiting the house on both sides of the house, where the bedroom is that we're renovating, as well as to the right where the main portion of the house is.
Who designed the septic system?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, why can't you redesign it?
Why can't we redesign the septic system?
Well, no, I, I'm looking at the septic system. I've never seen it. I, I just, I, I build houses. I put septic systems in. I've never seen a septic system that has two three-inch pipes coming out of a sully, going into a tank. I would think you would have run those pipes inside the, you said you got a full sully, just run it right underneath the dining room, come out up the other side and run it up to the tank. How old is the septic system?
Eleven years old.
Well. The concern that I have is you're gonna put yourself 23 feet off your front set, off your front setback on Elmira. I'm not as concerned about the other corner, the 13-foot, even though you are in an R40 here. So you're supposed to have 20 on your side, but you already have an encroaching sideline setback with your other bedroom here at 19.3, but that's close. So you're really, you're encroaching on two setbacks, one of which is a front setback that we generally don't give front setback relief, especially in the front of a house like this. We do on corner lots when, because you've got two fronts and two sides. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my thoughts right now and, and go to the board members for some questions. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, when I drove by it, it looks like on the Elmira sign of the lot, there are some bitty, very large trees back there.
Yep.
Do you, are you gonna keep those trees or?
I, I don't know if the trees are gonna be in the way, because I, I did some rough measuring with my own tape.
Yeah.
Looks like we can work around it, it looks tight, but it looks like these, this is, uh, this is, this is doable without removing the trees. But again, I'd have to have those surveyed and put on the plot somehow.
Okay, yeah, now that was my concern, it just looked like a really tight spot back there.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's a little overgrown, I, I couldn't, I couldn't locate the trees on my own or I, I didn't do that for this, for this pass, but that is something that we could look into.
All right, that was my only question, just the tightness of that whole spot.
Okay. All right. John?
Yeah, so, could you set the room or the addition back seven feet to hit your 30-foot frontage?
So, I think that, the way I'm interpreting what your, your suggestion is that we move the, that we move our proposed addition towards the back side of the house. So that we try not to or encroach as little as possible on the front.
The front setback, that's right.
I, I think that's an architectural solution I think they would be willing to look at, if you guys.
So, in this plot plan, in this plot plan, bedroom one, what is that distance from the, from the edge of the, the addition to the rear of the, there's, there's no measurement. In other words, how, how far would you go back to be even with bedroom one in the rear?
You'd have to go back seven or eight feet, I think seven feet is a close, is a pretty close estimate.
That'd put you right in line with the rear of the house.
I generally like to keep it off by a, by a six inches full flood if we can. It makes it easier to put the roofs together, et cetera, so.
So, that's doable in your opinion?
Yeah, I, architectural solution, that's fine, I think, and the owners are, are okay with it as well, so that's something we would consider.
Can I ask you a question on that? Then how far would that put you off your sideline setback?
The problem.
Yeah, you'd get closer there, but.
It puts you, it puts you quite close, because as we have it right now, I'm anticipating something about 13 feet. As that slides upwards, that could easily be halved. It could, it could be 10 feet or less, once, once we push that, the addition backwards.
Yeah, it looks like it'd be less than 10.
And so, that addition comes out from the house. This, this is what, 15 by 18 you're proposing?
That's correct.
Okay. It almost looks like a square that I'm looking at, but I guess the 18 is from the front to the back, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. John, did you have anything else?
No, that was it, thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, my concern is the front setback, but we, sometimes I, I think with these two, with these corner lots, we, there's something in the bylaw that if they park on the side, they might be able to go less. I don't know if this really qualifies as side parking or not, because of the orientation of the house, but I, I would like to see at least 25 feet in the front, on the front corner. So, if they can't go in the back, which would, which would be nice, then at least 25 feet in the front would be my, my goal. I don't have any questions, I kind of understand what you're trying to do.
Okay. Anthony?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Barbara asked a question I was gonna ask about the keeping of the buffer zone there on Elmira, but, you know, understand what you're trying to do.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none.
There's one.
The chairman yet?
Oh, oh, we have somebody, come on up here, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just had to wake up to get up and speak. My name is William Mackenzie and my wife Rita is here speaking on their behalf. We live on the, absolutely the opposite corner on Stiles in Elmira, where 46 Elmira Road. We've been there since 1994. And we certainly want to speak on behalf of this couple, we know them. He's retired, she is about to retire after her school days are over. As a teacher, wonderful people and always out working, taking care of the yard. And so, in any event, I can't think of a nicer couple for, for, for building a petition, an addition that they need to live comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? In favor of this petition?
One more coming.
My name is Catherine McDonough and I live across the street. And I agree with, I live next door to Bill and Rita. These people are hardworking, wonderful people, love the cake, love yarmen, and deserve to have the house that they've worked really hard to retire in. And we could not be nicer neighbors, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this petition? Seeing none. Okay. And there's nothing else you wish to add to this?
Nothing else we wish to add.
Okay. How far is your closest neighbor to your left? I'm looking at it right now.
To our left, oh, that's the N. Wrights. And actually, he sent a text to me that said he wanted to give us ample support too. I can give you his phone number if you want.
Now, we believe you, we believe you. Okay. I'm looking at your house on, unless they gave me the wrong house to look at.
Would the fence in the back come down between the two properties? On the, kind of the left-hand side, it looks like from Google Maps that there's a fence that separates the property in the back.
Yeah, that's correct, there's a fence there.
They'll stay?
Fence, yes. What was your, what was your inquiry, did you say something about taking it down or was it?
If it was necessary for construction to get in there.
Oh, I see.
Or if that's gonna stay.
The one in the front?
In the back.
In the back, the one, the one along here.
Oh, okay.
You're keeping that fence.
Okay. Give me one second here. So, you are at... All right, I'm seeing you right now on Google Maps, okay? So, you, you don't know if all of this shrubbery is gonna come down or not?
We're not planning on taking the shrubbery down.
Yeah, we, we prefer to keep it up unless you tell us that it needs to come down, in which case.
No, we're not, we're not gonna say that, yeah.
We put in a lot of bushes, we don't want to take it down.
No, 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 we don't want you to take anything down. Well, I'll tell you what, let's begin a discussion here, give me your thoughts, who would like to begin a discussion? Anthony, what are your thoughts here?
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to find, quite frankly, I'm trying to find a reason to approve, because I would like to. I'm looking at the variance elements that we have to adhere to and the qualifications. I think the hardship is certainly there and I don't think it would pose a substantial detriment to the public. It's within, I think, our guidelines that we, we could do it. If there's an alternative to pushing the property back that would be less detrimental to the front variance that we're requesting, I'd be more comfortable with that. And considering your, your neighbors seem to, in the back, that seem to approve what you're looking for, I'd be more in favor of that if that's possible. It may be a case that we recommend, you know, a continuance and you come back and see if that's something that the architectural design is worth doing, but that's where I am right now.
Okay. Jay, what are your thoughts?
I think this would come under a special permit from the 104 dot 3 dot 2.2, because it is a non-conforming with the 19 feet on the side already. And it's an extension, so I, I think it's a special permit. As far as, as far as the encroachment, as I mentioned before, I'd be more comfortable with 25 feet in the front. I know the 13, well, it's gonna go down probably to about 11 or 12 on the, on the side if you do that. And I, I would just kind of go back to that one provision, which is footnote X under the 203.5, which basically talks about corner lots have two front-side setbacks, two side, two front and two side, the front yard setback for the corner lots may be reduced to 25 feet to accommodate parking on the, on the rear or side. They do have parking on the side right now, so I don't know if we can use that, but that would be the one I would use to go to 25, but that's, I wouldn't want to go less than that in the front.
Excuse me, Mr. Frapery, I believe we just lost the chairman.
Oh, I talked too much?
Just give him a moment.
Okay. You missed all that, darn. Did he go out right when I started talking?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, I'll start again.
I think so.
But I do think it's a special permit, you know, I think the 104. It definitely is a special permit.
I mean, they go back a couple of feet, meet us halfway.
It's a pre-existing, you know, extension, duration, so.
I'd be happy to do that, that sounds good to me.
It's over here.
It's up here, yeah.
Corner lot.
Yeah. So, okay. He's back.
Hey, Sean, welcome back.
Hey, oh, thank you, thank you, how'd the discussion go?
We already voted no, like, Kenny. I didn't, I don't know if you heard what I was, what I was saying.
You think it's a special permit versus a variance?
I do, and what I referred to also was under 203.5, the footnote X, which talks about the corner lots. They do have parking on the side, the, the, the house is diagonally put into the, into the yard and their only parking is on the side. So, I could see how we could use the 25-foot front setback relief for that. So, I'd want to keep it to at least 25 feet if possible. If they can make that work, I'd probably be comfortable supporting it.
Well, okay.
Yeah, if we want to make that 25, it's pretty close already.
Two foot back, okay, that's perfect.
I'm, I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, so, but that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
All right. Well, let's see if the rest of the board. John, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd be willing to go along with that. You know, perhaps seven feet, pushing the addition back seven feet is a little too much, it'd be too close to the side yard. So, I'd be willing to compromise at maybe 25 feet. Push it back two feet.
I'm just looking at all of these, I'm looking at an overview of the houses and how they're set back on the street. Well, the only thing is, is if you push that back to 25, then you're gonna be probably, well, if that goes back 10 feet, I would guess that you're not gonna be any more than... If you push that back two feet, exclude, excuse me, to reach 25 on the front setback, I don't think you're gonna be any more than 10 off that side.
Yeah.
Somewhere between 10 and 11, yeah.
Whereas if they could stick that in the back corner of the house, which... What is that house currently, 24 feet wide?
I, I believe it is, well, it's gotta be close to 24, I don't have, I don't have an existing dimension on it. It's probably close, given the addition is 18. It looks like there's another, I don't know, I, I will, I might guess that this is more like 28 feet wide.
Well. I don't know, I think I'd, I'd like, I think I'd like to see some, something a little, designed a little different here. So, you're gonna take the existing bedroom and are you, are you creating a new bedroom or is this gonna be the, an addition to bedroom one?
It's going to be an addition to bedroom one. I think that, that when, when we, when we expand the bathroom, it's going to push itself into, you know, the existing bedroom suite itself. And then, we're going to need to accommodate some closet space, dressing area, et cetera. And then, the sleeping quarters would be all in the, in the proposed addition area.
If I could just clarify a little bit, the existing bedroom that is becoming a larger bathroom, that will, the other half of that existing bedroom will become a walk-in closet.
And a dressing area?
And a dressing area.
And the hallway into the bedroom area.
So that the addition is not...
Why do you need, why do you need an 18 by 15 bedroom? That's a huge bedroom. If you've got all of this bathroom and dressing area and walk-in closet all in the existing bedroom, you're gonna have an 18 by 15 just a bedroom?
Two feet of it, well, first of all, we have a king-size bed, it's an English Tudor, and it is a canopy, and it's a beast. And then, we have a triple dresser and a huge armoire. It's old and old and it's big.
Dining this around the furniture then, would you tell us?
Right, my problem, that's exactly it, I need to walk around the furniture. I can't walk around it with the walker, when it's in a tiny space.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, we really can't run a zoning board of appeals off how somebody wants to furnish their bedroom.
Oh, no, I've had it 40 years.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I certainly want to help you out here, but if I have to vote on this right now, my vote's gonna be no. Because you're encroaching quite a bit on two... a bit on two setbacks. I think you have an alternative here. I don't really think you've really thought the plan out, because I haven't seen the plan. I'd like to see the plan all drawn out, because this is just a square on the side of a house, and I'm not even, I, I, I don't even know how you got it designed. But I can tell you that I could design this to probably get you what you want. You could stick it on the back corner of the house. And I'm sure you could work around that septic that comes out, because that's underground anyway.
The, the backyard was recently done, like, last year. We had a twenty-by-eighteen-foot patio installed and all new sod, and we put a tiki bar back there. There's also, there's also a shed in the back corner, so I, I don't know how that would be possible to put. And that's the only yard area we have in the whole yard, because our house is situated on the corner, like, on the diagonal. So, and we just literally put a fence around the perimeter as well, both in the backyard, off the driveway, across to our neighbors' yards, abutting it, and then we put a new fence in the front of the house. And in front of our house, we have a huge pine grove. And the area that we're proposing to put the bedroom is actually in another wooded area. So it's the only area of our yard that hasn't been able to be used effectively. I like the pine grove in the front. It looks really wonderful.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, uh, we can take a vote on this. Uh, is that all you'd like to add right now?
Like, anything else?
That's all I can think of.
Okay. All right. Uh, so we're going to close the, uh, we're going to close the hearing to, uh, public input, and we're going to begin deliberation with the board. Uh, who'd like to begin a discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll start the discussion. I mean, I, I mentioned before, Sean, I'm comfortable if we can get it back to twenty-five feet. I know it's going to make it, say, ten to eleven feet on the side, um, but at least it gets that twenty-five feet. So I would be comfortable with that without having to move it to the back, but that's just my suggestion.
And you'd be comfortable with ten feet on the sideline?
Yeah, I think it's going to be closer to eleven, but eleven or ten, eleven feet, but, uh, I'd be comfortable with that. There's a fence there, and I think the, uh, the neighbor is set back a little bit. So, um, you know, they, they encroach currently at nineteen. This would reduce that in half, but at least it keeps it at twenty-five in the front. And I certainly like to approve, approve something if I can with, with conditions.
What conditions? What conditions are you talking about?
Moving it back to twenty, twenty-five feet from the front.
I, I, I think, I think if we're going to approve any, if we're going to allow them to move it, they need to return exactly where it's going to be. We, we don't get relief without something certified on the ground as... So that would have to be a...
That's my suggestion, but I'll leave it at that.
All right, okay. John, what do you think?
Well, I mean, if they can't move it into the, I mean, moving it to the rear would be the ideal situation. Um, if they can't do that, um, you know, I guess I'd be all right with moving it back just a few feet. Um, there's not a lot of room over there, so they don't have a lot of options. Um... So...
Okay.
You know, I'd, I'd pretty, I'd go along with, with the board suggests.
Okay. All right. Um, Barbara?
Um, yeah, I don't think, you know, I would want to approve it, um, as it's proposed right now. I think they need to go back to the drawing board and do one of two things. Either push it back a couple of feet or see if you can swing it around to the back of bedroom one, in that spot back there.
What do you think of the idea of, uh, also having them come back with a floor plan so we can see how this thing all falls out, so we're not just approving a, a, a square on the end of the house?
No, I think absolutely they'd have to do that.
Okay. All right. What do you think, Anthony?
Yeah, I'm in, um, favor, as I had said, that I, I think having a little bit of redesign and coming back, um, would be beneficial for, for them and give us a little bit more clarity in what we can approve and what we want to do.
Okay.
I prefer to have it in the back, as everyone else had, behind the bedroom, uh, number one in the bathroom, if that's feasible, or even if it expands the first bedroom out in a kind of equidistant way on that triangle where it's nineteen point three feet in the back. That's, that will always be my preference to have, uh, that type of setback rather than a front yard. But, uh, I'm happy to give them an opportunity to see what's possible.
Okay, okay.
Hey, putting that in the back, how close are they going to be to the side yard at that point? You know, that's still going to be...
It's going to be ten, eleven feet.
Right. It's, it's not going to be, uh, much different for that side yard. So, you know, we're looking at between ten, you know, ten to fifteen feet on that side yards, uh, regardless of how we do it. Um, question is, how much more do we want for the front setback?
If I could, if I could just interject and, uh, say something about putting this addition on the back of the house, uh, from an architectural perspective, uh, I think that if you were to put an addition on the backside of this house, it would actually create a very strange space between what is right now a three-season porch and the addition. It would create essentially a very narrow alleyway there, which is...
It's a dead zone.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a very strange dead zone there. Um, so...
So that's not, that's not a deck right there. That's a three-season room, right?
That's correct. It is a three-season room. I, I, I...
How come it's labeled?
I did, I did request, I did request that they label that properly. That didn't happen. I'm sorry to say.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, we've got a certified plan here, and it's not even correctly labeled. Is the family room correctly labeled?
Yes.
Yes.
How many, how many additions and renovations have you done to this property?
We did the three-season room initially.
Yeah.
So we converted the deck to a three-season room, because our yard had no trees and it was really hot in the back. Then we had a two-car garage that had one portion of it already converted into what was known as the man cave by the previous owners, that was actually, uh, had central air in half of the garage. And then we went in and said, "Why don't we just have it all a family room?" And we turned it into the family room. So our two-car garage is no longer a garage, it's a family room.
Mm-hmm.
AKA the Super Bowl room.
All parking is outside on the side.
I'm sorry?
All your, all parking is outside on the side of the...
Right, outside of the family room.
Just in the driveway.
Right, there's a garage there. I mean, there's a driveway there, and it will fit four cars, four cars.
Mm-hmm.
And then we renovated the entire backyard. Um, we put in hardscape and a fence around the whole yard, a fence in the front, and a lot of other things, a new roof, a new hot water heater. So we've put in a lot of money and a lot of shrubbery and landscaping, including a complete sod yard. So we've, in ten years, we've done a lot to make this our house for our retirement. And this is the last thing that we need, so that I can be comfortable here. When I did have the accident, it would have been nice if I could have recouped in our house down here, but I couldn't get into the doorways with the walker.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you guys go back and draw a plan that pushes that house, uh, that addition back to twenty-five feet? Let's see what it, uh, looks like. And I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a floor plan of this house.
Okay.
Exactly where everything is. I, I want everything properly labeled, and I want it laid out as to how it's going to be. I don't want to see two BHs here when there's not going to be a BH in a bedroom. I want to see what the proposed...
What the layout will be.
Floor plan is going to be.
That's fine. We can do that.
Then we'll, then we'll consider it from there.
Instead of a deck, make and have it, you know, three-season room, instead of family garage, have a family room, or whatever.
Understood. Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Okay. What, uh, Dolores, what do we have for a continuance? Uh, what's the next date we could get them on?
Could get them on February twenty-second and have a sixth one.
No, I don't want six on. What, what about the one after that?
It would be even worse. That would be seven, on March fourteenth. After that, it's March twenty-eighth.
How many on March twenty-eighth? It's going to take them a while to get their plan anyway.
There's only one on March twenty-eighth.
Let's put them on March twenty-eighth.
Have to switch my appointment.
It's really close.
Okay?
That's fine. Yes, we could do that.
All right. We're going to need you to sign an extension, but do we have a motion to, uh, continue the matter till March twenty-eighth?
So moved.
Second.
Seconding? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye, aye. Not opposed? Okay, we'll see you on March twenty-eighth with a revised plan.
Okay.
Setting it back to be no more than twenty-five feet closer to the road, and, uh, we'd like to see the floor plan, the entire floor plan too, the way the whole house is laid out.
That's fine. Will do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a nice night. And just sign that extension with Dolores, if you would.
After I do.
All right. Do we have media, do we have minutes we need to approve?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Hold on. Uh, Mr. Litchfield or one of your representatives? Need Mr. Litchfield to sign this?
Or?
We do, and we have one more piece. Well, no, just whoever. One, one of you needs to sign it. Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have meeting minutes. We do have one more business item.
Okay.
Um, if you could... Excuse me, we still have a meeting, kind of.
That's all right. We'll make this quick, Jake. We'll just approve the minutes and we'll all get out of here.
Um, I just wanted to make a motion to approve the minutes from January eleventh.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. We have more minutes? Is that just us?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Everybody ready to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. Okay, everybody. Have a nice night.
You too.